We will be broadcast, so I will call to order this meeting of the school committee on January 19th, 2023. This is a remote meeting this evening. Our agenda for tonight is a call to order, public comment. I'm going to request of the committee that we move the superintendent chair and student remarks to the end of the meeting before the executive session. As well as the consent agenda, we have a member that has another obligation this evening, and I want to make sure that we are able to jump into budget development. And then we will go to anticipated agenda items, future meeting dates, and an executive session of the purpose to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union administrative personnel. Because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee followed by our adjournment. We do have the full committee and Hello Connor, our student rep here with us this evening, as well as Ms. Kirby, Dr. Ellen Emma, and Dr. Hackett and Mr. Marin, if you are unable to see our whole panel here at home. That is who's with us this evening. And with that, I will jump into public comments. If there are any members attendees who are here for public comment this evening, if you would like to raise your digital hand, and we will elevate you to public comment, I will wait just a second to see. And seeing none, I will move into our FY24 budget development update. Dr. Hackett, Mr. Rowe is in the attendees, I believe that you will want to.
Oh, yes, okay, he must, I just looked, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Going to get a big promotion. I wasn't sure he was going to take it. Okay, well, good evening, everybody. And it's good to see you again. We are, tonight, we're going to be presenting what we are calling the Needs-Based Budget. This is a preliminary draft, as you remember at your last session, we brought forward a rollover budget, which we described to you as being nothing more than taking everything that we're doing now, bringing all the contracts forward, not making any adjustments for any kind of, any projected retirements or any projected enrollment adjustments, but just as a starting point, just to look at all that we do, bring it forward as a starting point. And tonight, this is really the first draft of what I would say is a budget that I'm hoping you can have some meaningful conversation around and provide us with some additional direction. So I did make a couple of notes in the bottom. This is just to make sure that people understand that this is a draft, some of the information here is subject to change. Because we are still confirming certain things and in numbers that are rounded, you can assume are estimates at this point. So with that.
Dr. Hackett, can I just interrupt you for just a second before you get started? I am going to ask committee members this evening to allow you to, and Mr. Rowe, to go through all the slides before we take any questions on the slides. And then we can go back through them and take questions from committee members. I'm going to ask committee members, because of our virtual format this evening, to not just jump in, but instead to please raise your digital hand, I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak, and I'm also going to request that we allow Mr. Brady to go first with any questions, because I do know that he had another commitment this evening, so I want to make sure that he's able to ask any questions that he has before he has to go. So that's my only requests, that works for all the committee members.
Thank you. So what you're going to see tonight in this preliminary draft is a budget that totals $63,631.67. So working backwards from the town meaning approved school budget of $60,904,378, which is the budget that we're in currently. What we have, what you're seeing in this budget is all of our contractual obligations, that includes not only personnel, but includes our contracts for transportation. It includes our contract for food service. Also, in this budget, you're going to, you will see an increase in our out-of-district tuition of $245,500. You'll see a, an addition of a .4 FTE Mandarin position at the high school, and this is a continuation of the implementation of the program that you started several years ago. We are now moving students through the high school, and this section, this additional is needed for them to continue along that pathway. That is the only required programmatic, like curricular content-related item that is in this preliminary draft. And we've also are currently, as a placeholder, we are taking out $300,000 of costs related to anticipated attrition, elementary enrollment adjustments, so attritioning up to and including retirement. So that is a current placeholder projection for the total that you see in front of you at the bottom, the $63.6 billion. Mr. Rowe, would you like to walk the committee through this?
I'd be glad to, thank you. So if you look at this presentation, you'll see on the left side, we've carried the current FY23 budget at the appropriation level. If you think back to when we had our conversation on a first quarter projection in November, we were projecting spending slightly under the total appropriation. Given what we've seen year-to-date, we are expecting now that we have our contracts settled with our major employee groups, and we've had some more experience with our biggest non-salary account, which is the out-of-district special education placement. We are expecting to spend right on that appropriation. It may require us to use some one-time funding for IDEA to get us through some of the out-of-district, but we're generally, we believe, pretty close to expecting to spend on our budget, meaning on our appropriation, our total appropriation for this year. So we're carrying on the left-hand side in major categories, and we've rolled up, as you may notice, the elementary schools, as we talked about in our last presentation, into one-line item, which is carried as cost center 114 through 116. So we have the current budget as allocated on the left-hand side. So it's the actual FY23 spending as projected, and then the next box is FY24. So what we've done is included the totals that the superintendent just went through, which is 2.725 additional spending, primarily in our salary lines. You notice that most of the spending is in salaries, and this is to accommodate the second year of the new contracts that have just been agreed to. With the adjustments for the Mandarin at the high school, the contractual obligation for transportation that we've also carried in the central office line, and then a $300,000 reduction that's indicated in the elementary lines for a reduction of three positions. You'll see that in the third box, which is where we compare FY2023 and FY2024 staffing. You'll notice that in the second line down Winchester High School, we've increased staffing by .4 to cover the Mandarin. And in the lines for elementary, we've reduced three FTEs from 179 to 176. So that the staffing equivalency for next year is proposed at 634.2 compared to the current 636.4. So that would be growth of 2.725 million or an increase of 4.48% on our total budget for this year. So that that's the, if you will, the preliminary draft of a moving forward budget for the projected enrollment that we have for next year, and the reason we've made the reductions at the elementary level is we would imagine that our most significant change in our enrollment would be at the elementary level, so we're looking to fine-tune that number as we move forward.
And I think as important as what's in this budget is what's not in this budget. And there are several reasons for it, we felt it was important, first of all, for the special education tuition line. If you recall, last year, we did take this up kind of as a separate item because of the unique experience we had have and continue to have with out-of-district placements and special education over the course and coming out of the pandemic. We did include a nominal increase in the budget that Peter just walked through with you. But if you also, you will recall that we, when we presented this to you this time last year, we talked about what we knew was going to be a structural gap, and we talked about some strategies to try to close that structural gap by bringing more money into the general fund to pay for special education tuition costs, and we proposed doing that over a two-year period. So I'll show you, break down that a little bit in more detail in the next couple of slides. We have not included the projected cost of transporting Lynch students from, from, instead of to Lynch to Parkhurst, which would be, which begins next fiscal year. If all goes to plan and everything stays on time, the Lynch school will be opening in the fall of 2025. So this would be essentially a two-year cost, and the cost is dependent upon decisions that the, that you as a committee make around how you want to handle the transportation fees and capacity for students. And we put together just a brief slide Andrew can speak to later on in this presentation. This budget does not include the priorities that we've outlined on Slide 11, which we'll review with you, and this budget does not include any athletics increase. And this would be currently, this, in the current budget we're in, athletics was also flat-funded, which has not been a huge issue for the couple of years of the pandemic, because obviously there were a lot of sports that didn't run. But we are now, you know, in full swing and performing excellently as we know. And when we start getting into the, into the playoff seasons too, sometimes we have overages, so, but we've left that currently, no budget increase at all. And we've also not touched there in any way, any fees associated, this is only on the expenditure side. For the special education out-of-district tuition, this is the current FY23 projection, you have seen these numbers before, I believe. The 2 million, the 2.5 million is what we're currently carrying in the general fund. The 835 is our IDA federal allocation that we applied toward sped tuition. This current year, we are spending the circuit breaker that we received last year, state fund, circuit breaker funds of 1.3 million for a total allocation of 4.7. We are projecting currently an expenditure of 5 million through the year end. That number can change, as you know, we do have a couple of ongoing cases that we're monitoring, so that number likely would not go down, but it could go up, but that's our best estimate at this time, and that is the number that we're working off of for FY23. So we are currently have a differential of 257,000. As I mentioned before, we do have carryover federal funding, IDEA, ARPA funding that we can apply to that to cover that overage for this year. Going into the FY24 budget, we are projecting a total expenditure of 5.7 million. I want to make sure that you understand that that total expense projection is based on some assumptions about placements, but it's also based on, as the asterisk specifies, that that is the, represents the 14% increase in special education tuition costs that the state is, is, has notified us that we should be expecting going into next year. That is an unprecedented increase in sped tuition, and I know that there is a lot of conversation, certainly at the superintendent level, I know at the school committee levels, and also with the legislature to help provide some relief for that, whether it lands there or not, we don't know, but we wanted to make sure that, you know, we're, we need to base this right now on the best information we have. Until we see something different, we're kind of holding on to that number. So with, with that, we would be projecting a $475,000 differential for the FY24 budget for the, for special education tuition. These are a set of priorities, some of them are, have, have, are relatively new in terms of they are emerging. We, as you know, that we had the ICCD, which is an outside company, come in and do a program review of the language-based learning disability program. We were provided with that report, you have seen a copy of that report that was provided to us at the tail end of last year in June. We have been working through the recommendations. You know, we have had some ups and downs with the program in terms of staffing, we've, we've lost, at B.O., we did lose a key staff member, so we've had our challenges, but the actual review, program review had several recommendations, one of which was that they recommended that a special programs coordinator be hired to oversee the LBLD program. Right now, we're using that, that title as a placeholder, because we also have other programs that really could use oversight, independent, you know, oversight with someone who is just charged with doing that and not part of another job of all of our programs with, obviously with a focus on, on LBLD, but we, we, we would see this being broader than that. We are, we have a priority need of a school psychologist 1.0, we have currently listed it as district, we, as you know, we have spent quite a bit of money on professional services last year to cover evaluations and services when we could not hire for the positions. We do, are, we do have a backlog that we're anticipating that will hit us, we're not backlogged, but we will be anticipating a significant increase in the evaluations as school begins next year, we are concerned about that and that load. We also have some requests from principals in terms of providing some additional support and our, a couple of our district-wide programs, so right now, we're carrying that as a unspecified in terms of assignment. We're carrying it as a district school psychologist, more information and details as we move forward. At McCall, there's been a request from our new SCL director for the addition of a social emotional coach. We have, as you know, we have, we do have 1.0, I believe, currently, and the feeling is, obviously, McCall is a big building, there's a lot of students, it's a middle school, and there's certainly plenty of need for additional SCL support. And finally, and Jen, you can speak to this, but we also have in here elementary social studies coordinator position. And Jen, if you don't mind, maybe you could just kind of highlight that.
Sure, and this is a nice time to say thank you for the support over the years. We know that, you know, quite a few years ago, we had kind of an invert in the district, that there was lots of support for curriculum professional development, consistency and oversight at the 612 level with the directors, and at the elementary where it is at least as important, with it being the foundation and with having the five schools all feed our students into the middle and then high school, that we really needed some district-wide consistency across the 100 elementary classrooms. So we so appreciate, and it has made an unbelievable difference, what we've seen in terms of having a literacy coordinator, a science and a math. And we really, really need to move to having that level of support with the social studies between the social studies frameworks themselves, the social justice frameworks, the support and connection between literacy that we see regularly. This position is just key, and it's frankly taking up almost all of the time of the instructional coach at the elementary to really focus and help with that, because that is an area that we do not have K-12 consistency and not only vertical alignment, but the horizontal alignment across the middle, across the elementary schools. So that is our one ask from that perspective of what we really need to do to have the core areas have the support that they need, K-12.
Thank you, Jen. And so Andrew, you want to just take the committee through these couple of slides related to transportation in Lynch?
Sure, good evening, everyone. This builds upon our last meeting, some options that we presented. So covering the current ridership, that remains the same, around 120 students, around 80 grand fees that we collect. Our assumptions are, still range from planning for just transporting those core kind of two-mile or greater students. It's about 233 students currently at Lynch, to Parkhurst, all the way, what's the scenario if we have to transfer all students, all students two miles or greater to Parkhurst? And so that max amount of buses would be about eight buses. And the minimum amount is about four buses going with just that two-mile. So those current options, the range in terms of budgeting and our expectations would be around that 582,000 for that kind of all-in, transport everyone model, down to about 198,004, just that two-mile group, that's around four buses on a new tier. And so those draft options that we presented are still under review, and we're sort of building out the scenarios and that kind of cost-benefit analysis as well.
And then for, as we move into, and always pay a lot of attention and regular attention to our enrollment, Mr. Rowe has updated the projection, and this is, this should look very familiar to you, although there, we've, we have not gone back all the years that we actually have, but back to 2006, 2007 school year. You can see that for using the model that has been the model, or the formula that's been the model for quite some time, he has completed the enrollment projection for the 2023, 2024 school year. We obviously have no way of really knowing what the kindergarten enrollment is going to look like. We had budgeted, if you recall, for the current year that we're in for 300 students, the current enrollment or October 1 enrollment at kindergarten level is 251 students. And then you can kind of go across the grade levels, and you can see the adjustments that are made and the assumptions that are made. For example, the 251 students in kindergarten that we currently have, based on the ratio and past history, specifically really using cohort survival model, that 251, we could expect 273, 305 to 3010. So you can just kind of go diagonally to see what those projections look like by grade level. Obviously, projecting my school through this is not really doable, but we do know the number of students at each grade level in our schools now, so that we, we kind of roll forward that distribution. We currently, or October 1 enrollment was 4,269. We are projecting a total K through 12 enrollment next year, and this is only K-12, it's not pre-K, 4,209. This is not accounted for any potential impact from residential projects, this is a straight who we know was born here, who we think is showing up, and how, what our experience has been, and history has been with students and when and how they entered the school system. Generally, we see the jump from kindergarten to grade one is, is we have students who participate in a private kindergarten experience, and then they join us in grade one, so that's part of the bump historically that we have seen. This is just another look at by grade span at our enrollment, this gives a little bit of history by grade span. You can see, you know, we have, we, in some places, we are leveling out, some places we're increasing a little bit. But it's definitely at the elementary level, you can see that there has been a downward trend since 2019, 20. This is not new information for the committee, and as you know, when we went into this school year, and we went into building the budget for the school year that we're in, we were very clear with, with, with town meeting, we were very clear with the public that we understood that we may be overstaffed coming into this year, but we really did not know what to expect and what the enrollment bounce-back post-pandemic, if we, to use a term that, I'm not quite sure we're post-pandemic, but post having to do a lot of the measures that we had to do that caused some students to withdraw, we just were not sure what the bounce-back might look like. And so going into this year, we, you know, we do believe that we have a much better handle on enrollment. And we do think we're kind of in a natural slowing down period and even a bit of a decline at the elementary level. But again, this does not include any projected growth from the new projects that are being developed and more than out of the ground in a couple of different places across town. This is a chart just to break down, this is based on October 2020, current year enrollment, October 1 numbers, just by school. So, you know, it just ties back to the total number we provided before, but you can see by grade level the, what the enrollment looks like at each one of our schools. And so in terms of budget, this particular slide just gives a little bit of history of where we have been with the elementary sections, because you know, as we know, that's been a fairly big focus of our attention and, and conversation and, and trying to adjust appropriately and responsibly for what we're anticipating for enrollments to look like as we move forward. You know, we certainly also know that, and this is not anecdotal, that we have students over the last couple of years that we have been working with and who have been recovering from, returning from the pandemic, from different environments, there, we certainly are, have are experiencing behaviors that are not really behaviors that many of us have seen in public education for quite some time. And that's, that is a universal statement, I mean, that is a conversation that is happening statewide. So we have made some adjustments in that throughout the course of last year, actually, as well as a higher rate of special education identification, which we had to make some adjustments for too. But having said all that, in school year '22, so the '21, '22 school year, we were carrying 110 elementary sections with 1,893 elementary students, you can see the class size breakdown, this is in the aggregate average. So this represents eight, of all elementary schools, 18 sections of kindergarten, for example, they were 283, 280 students, and the average class size was about 15. They were two hundred and eighty-three, two hundred and eighty students and the average class size was about fifteen. As we moved into the current school year, we actually budgeted for a hundred and seven sections, if you recall. As we went into the summer and we started to really continue to monitor enrollment through kindergarten registration and also through what we were projecting for an influx or natural summer growth, which just did not happen at the rate that we thought it was going to happen or projected that it might happen. We actually made a reduction of four sections over the course of the summer. So while we were at a hundred and ten in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and while we budgeted and in the approved budget, we were carrying a hundred and seven. We actually ended up beginning the year with a hundred and three sections to make the the adjustment. That adjustment also allowed us to repurpose those those positions and that resource to accommodate for special education services that were a part of IEP plans that were developed over the course of last year. And as Dr. Ellen Emma, Pam Gerard went through and really looked at, you know, all the IEPs and collected the information and mashed it up against staffing. It became very obvious that we needed to increase our support in special education because we had services included in IEPs that we were not in a position to provide appropriate resource for. So we did repurpose those positions to support special education. So the good news is while we had a higher special education need than anticipated, we did not have to come back to the committee and ask for additional positions to support that need. We were able to do it with the existing resources that we had. Going into the FY twenty-four school year, our projected enrollment, as you can see, by by each grade level for a total of eighteen thirty-seven, so down a little bit from from the eighteen forty-nine. However, we are currently proposing that we reduce three sections in the FY twenty-four budget based on, based on our projections. And as you kind of roll over to that final column all the way to the right, you can see the average class sizes across the district which are are still, you know, very favorable. And we feel pretty comfortable with this current three-section reduction. We'll continue to monitor that to see whether or not we are, we are going off kindergarten registration fairly soon. So that will give us some of it, some indication as to what that kindergarten number looks like. Currently carrying the the two eighty number is an estimate. Finally, just to look at the enrollment at the secondary level, and I won't read this aloud to you, you can see twenty-one, twenty-two through what we're projecting for twenty-three, twenty-four. We actually are pretty steady at the high, high school and and middle school level. We're not recommending any, any staffing adjustments, as you know. It's a, you know, it's not a one-to-one, it's not like the elementary level where you have so many kids in a, in one grade five classroom and you have three sections. And if you, if you're losing students, you do that calculation of, okay, when can, you know, is there a point that we need to go to two? The high school and middle school schedules are more complicated, students travel, there are required classes. And we provide a pretty full complement of program at both the middle school and the high school level. So we're not recommending any reductions. In fact, as you saw earlier, we're recommending an increase in Mandarin at the high school level. And finally, just wanted to show you, based on the projections that were done by the Winchester Planning Department and the UMass Donahue Institute. This was updated in October twenty twenty. We've just taken the projected enrollment that you saw on the last slide by grade span, the last few slides. And then we have added the River Street project and the Camber, Camber Street project projections, which provide ranges at each of the grade spans. So we have taken that just to total those ranges to to give you an idea of what could happen on the lower end and the higher end of the ranges, also understanding, we're not implying that all these students are going to be showing up in FY twenty-four. Obviously, this is going to be, you know, somewhat of a it it'll be interesting to see the rollout of 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 the projects and what the implications are for enrollment in our, in our schools and where students show up. But these are based on the projections that were done and updated in October. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to you, Madam Share, and happy to answer any questions, as is Peter.
And I was just gonna allow Mr. Brady to, just turn to him first and see if he has any questions for you or Mr. Rowe. As I said, I know he has another commitment this evening.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation and I appreciate all the work that everyone has done to get us to this point. I think it's a great first draft and I don't have any questions right now. Thank you.
Great. And then for the rest of the committee members, thanks, Mr. Brady. If you have any questions, I don't, let's start back at the beginning, Dr. Hackett, perhaps. And please raise your digital hand and I will call on you. Questions about this first slide? I don't see any. Dr. Hackett, you want to keep going through and I'll wait to see up, Mr. Nixon.
I I have a number of questions, but I wasn't, no particular order, but since this slide is up, I'll ask it. Don't really need the detail tonight, but I'm wondering if Dr. Hackett or Dr. Ellen Emma could maybe bring back to us at our next meeting little more detail about what that point four investment in Mandarin at the high school supports. I believe, I believe it's our current sophomore class, LMI, correct me on this, but I think it's our sophomore class that, you know, got onto this on-ramp with Mandarin at the middle school. This has been an investment years, you know, in the making, which I totally support. The committee may remember, you know, last year I argued for an increase that would actually allow us to start offering Mandarin one at Winchester High School. There was some extended conversation about that, but I don't, I don't believe ultimately that got into the budget. So I think we have thirty-three or thirty-four eighth graders taking Mandarin today at the middle school, which is terrific and presumably most of them are going to move on. But for for all of our other world languages, you know, we offer that opportunity for students to start the language at the high school. Maybe because they were just looking for something different or it wasn't, it wasn't a good fit. We obviously have a lot of folks who moved into Winchester prior to the high school. So I I have a continued interest in seeing if there's a way we can make Mandarin one available. So it would be helpful if maybe prior to the next meeting, we could get a little more understanding about what that point four is supporting. So that's really just a request. Can I ask Dr. Hackett, if you can advance to one of the, was that that dense sort of enrollment grid that I think went back to oh-five, oh-six at the very top?
Mister, Mister Nixon, can we hold on a sec? I want to just make sure we're going through in order so we're not bouncing around with.
Oh, I'm sorry. You want to go, you want to have questions with the slide?
Yep, let's just go through and make sure we're hitting questions. So we're not bouncing around with each.
Forgive me, I apologize.
That's okay. So does anybody else have any other questions about the needs-based budget or any of the detail around any of, any of these positions? Ms. Bolanessa.
Oh, I was just going to comment in, in with regard to Mr. Nixon's question. That last year I thought Dr. Ellen Emma had gone back and had tried, had checked with that year's current eighth graders on who might have an interest in studying Mandarin one in the high school in ninth grade. And I thought that based on that, the number was rather, was relatively low. So I I guess I feel as if it's something that you need to, or that we just need to understand if there really is a core number of kids who would be interested in stu, in studying Mandarin one or whatever language it might be.
I I recall that, I recall that as well, Ms. Bolanessa, that there was not a demonstrated need to support a full Mandarin one class. Is that, does that sound accurate, Dr. Ellen Emma? And that's true, that when we surveyed the previous years students, that that wasn't the case. I don't know if the high school has done another survey or checked in about current interest.
So I would just, based on Mr. Nixon's request, we can come back at the next meeting and and give you more detail on what that point four would provide for programming. And maybe in between then and now too, we can get a, a little bit of a handle on the, that the the question of Mandarin one at the high school level.
I I believe there is also a question around that last year, Dr. Hackett, that we also don't offer French one. And it was a conversation about if, if we're going to offer the initial level and we are talking about it, is there, would it be a conversation about offering the first level of every language as well?
So we'll come back with what the point four would cover. And we, I, you know, we've heard the questions and we can see what we can do to to try to address them.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions on these, this, these particular slides? Seeing no hands, let's advance on. Any questions on the actual versus projection? We've talked about this one quite a bit.
I have a comment on this slide.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Nixon.
Just want the committee to know the last adjustment we made to athletics was a three percent increase three years ago.
Any other questions on this slide?
Just want to add that the finest committee meeting at some point next week. We, and fitting Monday, we've posted currently from Monday and we have asked Mark to be there to present his recommended athletic budget for next year. I'm getting some feedback, just not quite sure why, but I don't know if anyone else is hearing.
Just a little bit.
Okay, it's driving me nuts. Just hoping it's not in my head, that's all.
We can't exactly hear what the feedback is. That may be just for you, a message for you, but it is garbly.
Get me, so I do have those Tic Tacs.
Anyone else on any of this information? Excellent. Okay, let's move on then. So what is not included in the budget? So these are the items that haven't been included in the budget as presented this evening is our needs-based budget. We talked quite a bit about the projected cost of transporting Lynch Elementary students at our last meeting. And then the priorities that we just talked about. Does anyone have any questions or comments on any of the items that are not included in the budget at this time? And again, if you raise your digital hands, if you have questions, because I'm not seeing, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Hopper.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm curious for the things that aren't in here, but that we, you know, reasonably expect to happen. I was wondering, Dr. Hackett, if you could just give us some of your insights as to you know, are they going to end up back in our operational budget at some point? Are there other funds? I know you have the Lynch busing, for instance, is sort of a one-time, two-time, you know, expense, you know, wondering if, you know, are there you know, Esser or ARPA or other buckets of money that, since it's not an ongoing operational thing, maybe could cover that? And just how are we, how are we thinking about all of these, these buckets, I guess?
Great question. And I think the Lynch Transportation one is the easiest one to answer in terms of the fact we know is it's a two-year projected cost, once again, assuming all the timelines with construction hold as 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 projected. And it's a, I think it's a great, you know, it's a great example of of what one-time funding can cover. I, you know, it would not be an appropriate use of of Esser funding for transportation under the guidelines of Esser. So we would not be able to use one-time funding for Messer to cover those costs. Whether there's, you know, whether there are, there are other one-time funds is, we, we know that they're in past fiscal years. The town has, has applied some reserves or free cash toward toward operating budgets. Obviously, a much better practice is to, if you, if you do use one-time funds, you use them on one-time expenses. But currently, there's not an identified funding source for the transportation. Special education tuition line and and those increases, as you know, Esther funds can be used for that purpose. As it's related to placements as a result of the pandemic. We, we have, we are carrying Esser balances in anticipation of potential and the explained concerns at the town level around forecasting revenue. And also because we have just been trying to grab a tiger by the tail in terms of tracking down exactly what the impact year over year is going to be about a district placements. I think that was a very good decision, especially potentially in the face of a fourteen percent increase on top of a higher number of students who have been outplaced and and outplaced in more expensive placements. So that would be available for offsetting some of those costs. But, you know, again, that's one time, that's one-time money on costs that would need at some level to come back into the operating budget. And and clearly doesn't, doesn't address what we know to be still a pretty significant structural gap that's going to be with us for a period of time.
Thank you.
Ms. Bolanessa, I see your hand.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say I appreciated the work from Mr. Marin on just calculating a range of cost for the transportation of the Lynch School students to Parkhurst in terms of the number of buses. And I guess I hope that we'd be able to see those scenarios in a little bit more detail in the future so that we, it just flushed out so that we can talk about it.
Absolutely. It is part of the, is one also part of the reason why we didn't include those costs in the operating budget because you have some decisions to make around how you want to handle that. And Mr. Marin's been working hard with the transportation company. We've been in contact with them. We're getting quotes from them and and he will have, we didn't want to get into that at this meeting because you have a lot to cover, but at a subsequent meeting, we'll be coming back to you as you've requested with different levels of scenarios that that you can have information on and have a conversation about.
That's terrific. Thank you so much.
Mr. Nixon.
So can I just ask, Dr. Hackett, can you clarify that last remark? You say alternative funding scenarios. Can you give it without like showing all your cards? What do you mean by that? What might that entail?
For for the Lynch Transportation specifically?
Yes, because I was about to make a comment and a suggestion.
Why don't you make your comment and suggestion?
Okay, so I, you know, I don't want to get too ahead in skis here, but to 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 Dr. Hackett's earlier point about using free cash for operating expenses, you know, you can sort of peel that back a little bit, that within any operating budget, there certainly are one-time expenses, though we tend to think about operating budget as not one-time expense. We tend to think of it about things like capital. But there are certainly one-time expenses with an operating budget. And it seems to me that, you know, an option that the school committee might consider, if administration feels it's worth exploring, is actually not including any funding for Lynch Transportation in the FY twenty-four operating budget, but specifically a separate article on the spring warrant that would, with some estimation, some description of what it would be. A message to town meeting, it's a one-time expense, it's supporting a fantastic project. One for which, by the way, we just found out three weeks ago, we're getting two point eight eight million dollars more than we thought. So our net cost is sharply lower than it was just a month ago. Seems to me we could put in a request to fund transportation for Lynch. And that funding source could be free cash. And it can be very clear about how that is to be used. And if we don't expend it all, it reverts back to the general fund. That in in some ways, that's a way to really message it clearly with town meeting. And just like, and I'm having a flashback, Ms. Bergstrom, to our discussion about all-day kindergarten. You know, there was a lot of angst about when we finally funded it, what that would mean years down the line when anyone looked at our budget documents and saw this sort of sharp, sharp spike in funding to have to sort of explain it. Just the idea of being able to pull out Lynch Transportation off our operating ledger feels kind of clean to me. But that just may be something worth exploring.
I'd also like to suggest, Mr. Nixon, that the townwide cost of transporting Lynch Elementary students is not just in helping out families and being able to get Lynch students across town. But it's in fact, would support the many traffic issues that the residents of Winchester have been very focused on lately. And that perhaps it would also, another idea we could consider would be a request to partner with the select board on ARPA funding, since it would be able to cover transportation costs and 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 as it is, as it is related to townwide traffic. I know I have participated in several parents' association meetings for parent associations that are in the vicinity of the Parkhurst Elementary School and not That are in the vicinity of the Parkhurst Elementary School and not only are Lynch parents concerned about getting students to Lynch Elementary School at Parkhurst. But the other elementary schools that are in the area of Parkhurst are concerned about the increased traffic and safety level. If everyone would be driving their students across town and the impacts on those neighborhoods too. So it seems like, to your point, I, you know, a Warren article is one idea. In the past, select board has also asked school committee what their requests around ARPA funding had be, would be. And this, this may be just one of those. Ms. Bolanessa? I saw your hand up. Did it, it went down. Are you all set?
Yeah, I was debating whether to ask it here or on slide eleven. But I was just going to say, when we, for the priorities outlined on slide eleven. I think last year, Dr. Hackett had provided the priorities in, or perhaps in a prioritized. I think it was like tier one, two, three last year. And at some point, it might be helpful to the committee in, in terms of evaluating those priorities. If you had.
Of course, of course.
Thank you. Mr. Hopcraft.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I think busing, you know, all or as many Lynch students as possible is really important. And I, I, I think that in order for that to happen, we, we need to also provide it as a free service. For that community. And, and I guess my question is just. You know, when, when Mr. Marin was talking in a prior meeting about the number of buses. You know, it, it really dawned on me how many Lynch students walk to school. And, and so I, I was curious if Dr. Hackett or Mr. Marin, if either of you, you know, had. To give us some sense of, of, you know, what it would look like if, if, like what, what percentage or what number of kids tend to? Walk versus take buses, because I seem to recall there were like three buses, I think, that went to Lynch now and it was going to take eight buses because so many kids walk. And so the, whatever that, that number is, I'm kind of curious what that translates into if, say, the people within two miles. You know, if, if that number were driving, yeah, like how many cars are we talking about coming up into the Parker Sam Rose V O kind of neighborhood? You know, yeah, so, so I was just trying to quantify that a little bit.
Well, I'll, I'll start by saying too many to your last question. I, I believe, and Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, without me going and going flipping through the slides again. But I think our current ridership at Lynch is a hundred and twenty. I think we have one bus in the morning and two in the afternoon. We provide transportation in the afternoon to, to Kids Corner at the Mystic School and also for students to the Winrec program. At the Mystic School who are essentially overflow because we also, Winrec also offers an after school program at, at Lynch. That also, just to be clear, factors into this. So those are eighty students, I believe. Currently who stay at Lynch after school, who Winrec has made the decision to not offer that here for space constraint issues. Here Parkhurst, I should say. So those students would need to be presumably transported to Winrec or back to their homes. That is, that in and of itself is an entire bus. So we already sent one bus to Mystic for Kids Corner and Winrec Overflow. And now if everything were to stay the same, a second bus in the afternoon would be full going to Mystic. Alone, just for after school care. So, you know, and every bus is, is, there's a cost now. More than likely, depending on the routing, it probably wouldn't quite work out that way. It probably would be not just one bus, we would probably, the routes could potentially have Winrec kids on a bus that makes stops. And houses along the way and then goes to Winrec. So we, we just haven't, you know, we haven't done those, that, that routing yet. But there's a lot of, we do have a lot of students who find another way to get to school. Beyond being transported. And it is the convenience of a neighborhood school. And, you know, you know, we are not intentionally, but we are taking that away for a couple of years. While we build them a brand new fantastic school that they're going to have two years from now. So, and that's the conversation, you know, that you as a committee have already started to engage in. And, and we will continue to engage in it. And I, and I like Mr. Nixon's idea, I like the idea of pulling outside the budget for that reason too. Because that buys you some more time to have that conversation, to, for us to collect data. Which is going to be important. And, you know, I've met with, Mr. Hopcraft and Ms. Bergstrom and I actually met with the Lynch Parent Association the other day. I met with the, had a volunteer meeting with Lynch staff the other day to begin the, some of these conversations. And we'll be putting, putting together a transition team, parents and, and, and staff as well to address. Some of these issues, this is a big one. And, you know, I, I believe that parents who participate in that can really be instrumental. And helping us really good, get good data from parents on what the ridership would look like if we offered it for a fee. For no fee, so that you can have better information to make decisions around that. I don't know if that answers your question, Mr. Hopcraft.
I think it does. I, I think, yeah, I, I thought of a, a clear, you know, way to ask you, which is how many people are within the two mile range? I don't know if Mr. Marin knows that, but.
It's about half and half, right, Andrew?
Yeah, I guess I could add two things. So we'll get a two mile distance from Lynch to Parkhurst, it's about fifty percent. So it's about two hundred and thirty students. And just to clarify, I think maybe the first part of your question, the current ridership. It's about ten percent transport in the morning, thirty percent in the afternoon, the remainder being dropped off or walking, so.
Thank you.
Wow, if you'd asked it that way, I would have turned it right over to him.
Any other questions on this slide? Otherwise, we can move on, Dr. Hackett.
Ms. Bergstrom, I just wanted to clarify that with respect to transportation, because I expect this question might come up. Our need to find a funding source, it's not really an oversight on anyone's part. This is not a cost that's eligible by the MSBA. Not only is it not eligible for reimbursements, it's not an allowable project expense. Swing space is allowed and we have to pay a hundred percent of it. The transportation is not allowed. So we had to get through January seventh. Now that we have a project, now we got to figure out how to move these kids.
Right, thanks for that. That's an important clarification, Mr. Nixon.
Can I ask one, one more question related to that? Just helping educate me on, in terms of the town, the, the recent override for Lynch area traffic improvements? Is that anything that could factor into this at all, or is that, is that just going into other funds that Ms. Bergstrom already talked about?
That funnels four hundred thousand dollars into the capital stabilization fund. You can't use capital to pay for school buses.
So before we move on off the slide, I, I wanted to add something that I've now, oh, yes. One, you know, one of the conversations has been happening around one time funding and the use of one time funding for one time costs. And the use of reserves or free cash. You know, this school department, unlike the school department that I was previously in with, has really. Extremely limited one time expenditures. So we contract for food service, we contract for, for busing. We, you know, we, we DPW in the town handles our custodial and maintenance needs. And we're not buying, as I was in another life, buying new John Deere lawn mowers and tractors. We're not, you know, there, there are no real one time purchases that happen in our operating budget. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a very difficult conversation for us to have in terms of, okay, we have some one time funding. What are some one time costs that we can offset? We just don't have them. And that's good news. I wouldn't want to go back to having to handle custodial maintenance. Actually, we, transportation and drivers we employed, I, I, you know, I don't miss those days. But when we were going through budget reductions in that, in that community, there was a much wider bucket. We could, we could delay purchases of certain equipment. We could look to try to reroute our transportation, which meant real costs in terms of how many drivers we needed. We negotiated the driver's contract. So we had a lot of levers we could pull that never came close to the classroom. And I just think it's an important point to make, and it really goes back, I, Mr. Nixon, his comment just made me think of it. I, I just don't want to lose sight of that because, you know, we can't delay the payment of a special education tuition, right? And we can't delay hiring a teacher to, to cover a classroom. So that we don't have a lot of options when it comes to one time funding. So with that, I'll just keep going. Thanks for indulging me.
Questions on the out of district tuition projected?
And this is the current budget?
And I just, I had a clarification question, Dr. Hackett. So this, the expenditure projection and the total allocation, the differential between them. Does the, the expenditure projection increase, includes the increases we expect to see in out of district tuition? Is that correct?
That, well, Mr. Row, why don't you speak to it?
Sure, those, those are our current, those are our current projection of what we'll spend for this category. Compared to the budget. Meaning we would overspend the budget by two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars.
Oh, I'm, you know, I'm sorry, I'm on the FY twenty four in my head, not the.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
So this is really saying that this year, we're slightly over budget on that line, we'll have to find a way to make it up. Either through other lines or potentially through the IDEA funds.
But the difference between the allocation and the projection, does the projection include the, that ten to fourteen percent increase?
The projection of, in this for twenty four does. So that that really defines a significant amount of that gap. Where, what we're doing is working with the special ed department right now to have as good a fix as we possibly can. Given the data we have available to us, to understand how many of our current students. Might be e- either graduating or aging out. I mean, we, we know who will age out because we have the data on that. But how many may be graduating? Sometimes students of this profile require additional time. So it's not always true that a twelfth grader finishes at the end of twelfth grade. So there, there's, there's still movement in terms of defining how many students may be moving out, as well as trying to project. Which new students that aren't on our radar right now may impact this. So partly we're defining a gap that has relation to patterns we've experienced in the last couple of years.
And that five point seven million is all of what he just said times fourteen percent.
Right.
Right, right.
And by not funding this as part of our operating budget, following up on what Dr. Hackett just said. Unlike one time expenditure, if we don't include this gap in this budget, that gap only gets larger than in FY twenty five.
Yeah, generally it will. There are obviously, there are variables. I mean, and one of the points that I think the superintendent was looking at is, and made is that. We think this population has been impacted by things that happened during COVID with remote learning. Part of the behaviors that we're seeing is obviously being seen in special ed education programmatically. Since that flows through the costs, it's pushed some of these costs up. The question is, when and if that will stabilize a little bit, we, we just don't know. So, but we're certainly seeing this pattern right now.
I, I would also say, like, to your point, Ms. Bergstrom, you know, we would have to bring some portion of this back in. And that, and that portion may be higher because of the increase in the tuition rate. But we wouldn't, we would need to bring it back in, which gets to the question of what is the true structural gap? And, you know, that's been hard to establish. I mean, we thought we had a pretty good handle. And I think, you know, we did identify that we believed it was about a seven hundred thousand dollars structural gap. So we're not, we're not too far off with that projection. You know, we added money, as you know, in, in the current general fund for this fiscal year. But we were, we're still two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars shy. You know, the other point I would just make about this, and, and another reason to consider this outside of the budget at this point, is that, one, yes, we could look at one time funding. To cover this. But two, you know, there's hope that we, that the state may provide relief. However, they provide that, whether it's through the proposal by MASC, MAS S for increasing the rate of circuit breaker. That may be for FY twenty five only. We already know that FY twenty five, we will be at one point eight million. Which is about five hundred thousand dollars more than we currently are, are using. You know, in a worst case scenario, we could, we could look at that FY twenty five circuit breaker. And spend some of that as it comes in, which is not good practice, but, and you've done a great job prior to, you know, over the years of not doing that. But it, you know, it's a possibility, but additionally, you know, there, we, I think applying it some pressure. And I know that, I know that FinCom members heard this, I know that select board members heard this. And, you know, we, we can use all the help we can get as a community. Circuit breaker is our only really. Measurable outside funding source. I mean, our chapter seventy funding is, is minimal. We generally, we don't really receive any more than the state minimum allocation. And on top of that, with our, with a declining enrollment, that state minimum allocation, which is a per pupil allocation. Will also drop over time if we, if enrollment doesn't stabilize or start to, start to increase. So circuit breaker is really our best hope of, of getting some relief from the state level. To help offset the extraordinary costs. And clearly, we're not alone. If two of the major educational organizations in the state are also saying that this relief is needed. So what you're seeing here is being experienced everywhere. We are not, we are not alone in this challenge.
And the, the letter from the school committee will be coming back to the committee at our next regular meeting to try to support those. Those initiatives at the state level, as well as this committee has indicated their support of. I saw Mr. Hopcraft and then Ms. Bolanessa.
Yeah, so it sounds like there's two variables here, you know, one is an increase in services needed due to the pandemic. And then the other is an increase in the potential cost of those services, which can be as high as fourteen percent. And I wonder, I, it makes me nervous not to be budgeting for this. And I wonder if, if we, it might make sense to take up a look at the increase in services. And, and, and then come up with somewhere between where we normally see. The increased cost of services and the fourteen percent and something in the middle on that. And, and plug a line in there so that, you know, so that we don't get hit by so much. I don't, I don't think Robin, Peter, and Paul, with regard to our practices, you know, it makes a lot of sense. Because it is good to have good fiscal policies here. But, but anyway, so I, maybe, maybe you have another plan for, for how we, we meet this, or maybe it comes later, but I, I just thought I'd mention that.
And, and, and no, I don't, but it was part of your, it's certainly part of our thinking, you know. And I think, you know, it's also part of the discussion you had last, last year around this topic. I remember we identified the seven hundred thousand dollars and then the discussion was, okay, if that's a structural gap, how do we do this? And how much do we, if we think about it in a two year cycle, how much do we try to do this year? And then realize we, we need to do more next year. So certainly, you know, I, I would agree with you. I mean, the key is that at some point, we have got to get closer to the actual number. That is, is as steady and predictable as possible in that two point five million dollar general fund number. So that's where money needs to be added to help reduce this gap year over year. Because right now, obviously, we, we don't have enough money going in FY twenty four between what we know we have the circuit breaker. And what we're predict, predicting we're going to have for IDEA funding. So I, yeah, I think, you know, it would be better practice to not just put, to roll the whole thing out. But we did describe it last year as a little bit of a gamble. And I, you know, the other, the challenge with this is where, what is the end number on the overall budget? Where are we going to land with the overall budget? And, you know, how much of that, as you can see, really is related to, I mean, that's a significant portion. If one percent of our budget is roughly six hundred thousand dollars, you know, what we're talking about for increases here. Represent well, over one percent of our overall budget. So that, that four percent, you know, is pretty well spoken for, a good portion of it. And, and that's, that's, you know, that's what we're supposed to do, and this is the program we're supposed to provide, and that's what we're about, and we need to do it. You know, and I just think it's been, you know, significantly impacted by the last couple of years. And, you know, I, I understand that, so, but I, I agree, I think we need to find some kind of in between.
Not even supposed to provide, legally obligated to provide.
Well, yeah, and I would say when I say supposed to, I mean morally obligated to provide.
Ms. Bolanessa, did, was your question answered?
Oh, um, yes, I just had, I don't know that this can be answered, but on the expense projection. Is there a timeframe or a? is there a timeframe or a um, that we would know better? What, um, if there's really going to be the fourteen percent tuition increase?
Um, yeah, excuse me, yes, I don't have the date, but yes, the rate setting commission will um, sometime this spring uh, come up with a definitive number for uh, private schools. Uh, but it'll be after we set our budget, unfortunately.
Yes.
Yeah.
After, yep.
Right.
Thank you.
But the messaging is at least ten and up to fourteen, or that's just where they're thinking is?
Uh, I, I, I believe that number's in flux. I believe that um, they sent it out to school systems as a warning shot that be concerned, uh, you know, I don't have a crystal ball to know what the number will be. Um, but it, you know, it's something we need to worry about and prepare for, so, but I don't have a number, I'm sorry.
If I recall, I don't think they set a bottom end of the range. I think the, the message was you can expect up to fourteen percent.
Okay. Well, because I, I'm thinking about reflecting on what uh, my fellow board members have been talking about and thinking that if it, if we don't include it as part of our operating budget, going back to FinCom to cover a half million dollar expense that we were unprepared to cover in our general budget may be tricky as well.
True.
Not going back for an extra teacher.
Right.
And these are the priorities. I believe Ms. Bollanessa had had a question, Dr. Hackett. Are these in any particular order or priority, or will you be bringing that back to us, or?
We, we, we'll bring it back to you.
Okay.
I don't want to say they are in priority order right now, and I don't want to say they're not in priority order.
Okay, great.
Bring it back to you.
Mr. Hopcraft.
Yeah, I know the language-based learning um, is certainly a um, you know, a, a, an, an issue of great concern to, to a bunch of folks in town. Um, I wondered if you might just tell us a little bit more, um, you know, about that first position and, and about the recommendations and stopping short of prioritizing these uh, per Ms. Bollanessa, but um, was just curious about, about that.
Sure, um, well, you know, I knew it when I applied, well, I didn't know it when I applied for this job initially, but I, I knew it in, in going through the process um, that there isn't one administrative position, central office positions included, that uh, focus is only on one thing. So, um, as much as I would love to have um, Dr. Ellen Emma focused solely on curriculum instruction, which she does a really good job of doing, I often uh, find her dabbling in uh, issues of um, where the dumpster's going to go uh, in front of Parker, says we were moving preschool in, um, how we're going to dispose of file, I mean, so we're, we all pitch in, uh, thank God. Um, to do things that really aren't in our job description, and I'm always saying that because uh, you know, this position, as I think about it right now, um, I would love it to be a pure position that only deals with uh, pro, district-wide programs. Uh, I think that has to be the emphasis, and I don't, I wouldn't want to load it down with things that are totally unrelated or um, you know, that, that take up a lot of time, but there are other pieces of this conversation um, that we are addressing and need to continue to address uh, around how we identify students to go into special education to begin with, what supports are in place before they get there? What are those conversations? And, and then what's the, you know, what are the, and one of the, the um, recommendations and statements in the, in the review was, was truly, what's the entry criteria into our district-wide programs? Because I think that, um, you know, there, anecdotally, uh, there's some feeling that um, we have students in some of our district-wide programs right now um, that may be in there for reasons other than that's the best placement for them. Um, and, and someone to really focus on that and, and really get clear about criteria. Because remember, these district-wide programs service all of our elementary students, right? So, uh, a program at, at um, at V O or at Lynch or at Morocco or at Ambrose, um, those programs have students from across the district. So, uh, the decisions about students in, from one school qualifying for a program that is housed elsewhere. Um, you know, there's a lot of work that's done and there's, there's good coordination, but to really have one person who has kind of the district-wide view and understanding of, of where our schools are at would be extremely helpful, and that was part of the recommendation, specific to L B L D, but it was part of the recommendation that came through the program review. So if I was, if I was kind of unclear, it was a little bit intentional, but um, I hope that helps some.
It does, thank you.
But it sounds like there is clearly a need in that position, Dr. Hackett, that we, clearly, there's a demonstrated need in the district for additional support in that area that our current staffing is, is unable or at their capacity to ma-manage right now.
Uh, that's an absolute more than true statement. Um, you know, and I, I would also say, and you never, you know, don't, not to promise these kinds of things. But, you know, there, these kinds of positions that nobody likes because of central office and, you know, um, we get into how many central office administrators are there, and what's the head count, and how come there's so many? Um, often, these positions provide um, help in cost avoidance, which is something that um, I think sometimes is underrated uh, in this business. And, you know, uh, from experience, special education directors and superintendents who uh, don't need to pick up the phone and call the attorney on every single issue because they have the experience to manage it, to um, you know, uh, some position like this that can really uh, be clear about criteria um, that can help uh, provide more appropriate programming for students who might otherwise be put into a program because, um, you know, we just don't have the ability to really, or the bandwidth to really gather that information. Um, you know, these are important positions, and, and you have invested, we have, and you for many years have invested heavily in our in-district programs, which is um, important. Um, it's the right thing to do. Generally, it's, it's also fiscally more um, eff-efficient. Um, and that's what's also been difficult about losing so many students outside placements. And, you know, I don't think we are to blame, if, and, and to use a word, um, for those out-of-district placements. I think we are truly, um, we are experiencing what all other school systems are experiencing, and that is, you went through a period of time where uh, we all went through a period of time where we truly could not provide a lot of special education services to students for a long period of time, when we were fully remote, when the pandemic first hit, going into the hybrid remote situation uh, that we had for a full year. Um, and, you know, understandably, parents um, became extremely concerned, students lost some ground, and I think that drove some placements. So, this position would also hopefully provide us the opportunity to really evaluate our programs, continue to strengthen our programs, and hopefully, um, maybe even be able to help bring uh, students back from out-of-district placements, but at the very least, to be able to make su- make sure that we can keep more students in district.
And it seems a core value of special education and that um, we have always talked about here is a free and appropriate placement and least restrictive environment for our students too. So, we need to, um, you know, I know we've always been committed to that in the past. It has driven some of the way that we deliver, have delivered special education services in this district by creating the in-district programs to be able to keep students here. Um, so I think that's really um, a, a good reminder too. Um, and it strikes me that the school psychologist falls under that as well, Dr. Hackett. That was going to be my question then, Mr. Nixon, I see your hand. Um, is that, um, I'm curious what the offset cost of that is. So I know that when we pay for um, for outside services to have to come in because many of our um, special education evaluations have to happen on specific timelines that are driven by um, federal and state laws, that um, it, they have to happen within a certain period of time, which often causes us to, when we get a bolus of those, um, to have to use some outside services to be able to complete them. I'm wondering, is it more cost-effective? Would the school psychologist allow us to offset some of that cost in the long run?
So, if we're going to have the full discussion um, on this particular slide, I would just say to you that currently, that particular uh, request are a priority, and the um, S E L coach from, from McCall um, are, is, to, in a certain, to a certain extent, currently placeholders, because
Okay.
we need more data, um, we need a little bit more clarity on it, you know, this would, isn't necessarily just due to increases in valuations, but um, you know, there have been conversations about need for additional support in and around um, behavioral support. So, it, you know, we could come back to you and say, you know what, um, we, the, we're, this is going to perhaps morph into a a behavioral therapist, B C B A position, uh, but we wanted to make sure that we put this in, um, in the priority listing for right now. Um, and, you know, to the question that Ms. Bollanessa asked earlier, we will come back with um, this more vetted and, and, and prioritized.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, Mr. Nixon. I see your hand went down, that must have um, answered your question.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll just say something very, very quickly. So, um, my, my, I think in the past through rounds of conversation, I feel like we do our best when the school committee kind of comes up with a prioritization. Um, if, if in fact the superintendent wishes to or is comfortable bringing forward priorities, I would just hope, Dr. Hackett, you're really clear about sort of what, what rubric you're using. Um, there are many different ways, different lenses through which we could, we could, we could all agree on important lenses to apply to this list, and we might come up with different priorities. I mean, the one that first comes to mind is um, you know, what sort of position maybe has the biggest potential uh, impact district-wide? And that would be a district-wide position. So, for instance, school psychologist, it's, it says here, district-wide, that's a resource that would be available to all students. That's not the same thing as the S E L coach at McCall. Um, on the other hand, there could be like such an acute need for the S E L coach, that that kind of changes the calculus. I mean, it would be helpful for me just to understand, absent these investments, not only sort of how are we covering it, but what is the real consequence of that? You know, Ellen Emma has so many other important things she can be doing, figure out where to, where to put dumpsters, but somebody has to figure out where the dumpsters go. But, um, I mean, that, that's a helpful, I mean, funny but not funny analogy, and I appreciate Dr. Hackett bringing it up. I mean, we have such talented um, people um, who kind of just need to be doing their job. So if they're being pulled away, if they're being distracted because we haven't made investments in other places, that could be a part of the message as well.
And I appreciate that, uh, Ms. Dixon. Um, and we'll do, you know, to the extent that we can quantify and even uh, qualitatively or anecdotally provide, uh, because obviously some of the um, the questions you're asking are all, the, the, they are definitely the right questions. The measure of, um, you know, how much impact would we have gets a, gets a little bit tricky because it's, some of that's a little hard to, to quantify, but um, we will, we'll do the best we can to provide a, 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 as clear rationale as we can for the priority, the priority order that we bring back to you.
Do I go to the next slide, Dr. Hackett? I think we've talked a lot about busing, is everybody okay? Does anybody have any pressing questions about this? We talked about it on the other slide. I think we can move on unless I see anybody's hand quickly.
I took advantage.
I saw that. Um, enrollment projections, we've also talked about this one quite a bit. Um, are there, Mr. Nixon?
You know, I was going to ask a question about this, so, um, I, I just, I wanted to maybe just make an, I already spoke at the last meeting about how the kids that we have in elementary today who were here last year, each of their cohorts grew, and this chart shows that. I, I just want to make maybe an observation. If we look at if we look at, let's look at the kindergartners in the twenty nineteen, twenty school year, they're on the left, three hundred and thirty-five in that cohort. And if you follow that cohort, oh, if you follow that cohort, they grew to three forty-seven, then they, then it was three forty-five, then three fifty-six and three fifty-eight, pretty steady. If we move over to the right, though, we.
To be clear, Mr. Nixon, wait, the last column is projected, remember that, or the last um, row.
Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah. And that's actually what I'm sort of building up to, is if you look at the kindergartners from the seventeen, eighteen school year, where they're at three oh four, big jump to first grade, not unexpected, a lot of kids that are out for private placement, a little bit of growth to first grade, and then down to three twenty-four, kind of flat, three twenty-eight, then three twenty-five. But there is a class here, there, I just found it. It's the class of, yep, it's actually that first kindergarten group, oh-six, oh-seven at two eighty-nine. If we just sort of follow that diagonally, you see some growth. Um, it flattens out a little bit, flattens out, and then we hit COVID, three forty-nine, three thirty-nine, then three forty, but then three twenty-seven. So I'm just curious to know, for some of these classes, we're projecting flat enrollment. Like, today's fourth graders, three thirty-seven, we're projecting three thirty-seven. Today's third graders, three fifty-six, it's projecting three fifty-eight. By the way, absent, you know, the housing stuff, which makes sense. Today's second graders, two seventy-two, we're projecting some growth. But in other classes, like today's seventh graders, we're saying we're going to lose students. We're actually saying we're going to lose a lot of eighth graders. Is that driven um, by something we actually know about that cohort? Or are we simply saying, well, the past three-year trend has been flat or falling, so that's going to continue? And, and I'm asking it because the trend line among the different classes is not consistent. Some classes are flat, some classes are going up, some classes are dropping, not really consistent. Everybody was impacted by COVID, but the impact was not the same across the board. So, I suppose my question is, if, if the recent two- or three-year trend line has been a drop, are we just saying therefore we project it's going to drop? Which is not wrong, I ju- I'm just curious what's driving that.
Do you want me to answer that? Sure. Um, so what we, so you, you're correct to see those different patterns with different cohorts. And I think the most important one to look at is the um, change that you see between eighth and ninth grade.
Yeah.
Um, but just to back up for a second, we base these trends of cohorts from year to year on the period of the eighteen, nineteen school year through the twenty twenty-one school year. In other words, the three years prior to COVID. Um, because the theory is that the two COVID years, meaning twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two are more of anomalies affected by some outside forces. So if you apply the three-year trend from school years nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one to the projection, uh, to the, to the current year class, let's say of um, the current first grade, excuse me, the current kindergarten of two hundred and fifty-one, the normal growth um, from kindergarten to first grade is an increase in students, and you see that really in every year. But, so the three-year percentage growth, I think it's seven percent, I don't have this, I have a different slide that actually has it on it. Um, so you see about a seven percent growth. If you go to the eighth grade and you look at the period nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, you'll notice there's a drop uh, in each of those three years between eighth grade and ninth grade. In other words, something in the community um, has been pulling kids away instead of going to the high school. We don't know.
It's pri- it's private school is what it is.
That's my guess, right? So that we, we're projecting for next year that the three hundred and forty, currently in the eighth grade, will be three twenty-seven next year. So it's using the three-year historical pattern for the, for the class, the cohort of the prior grade to, to look at what's the pattern been. So, generally, what you see is there's some growth from kindergarten to first, little less, but some more from first to second, and then there tends to be a pretty steady population. And then, um, there tends to be some reduction from five to six. Although, you know, look at the class from nineteen to twenty actually grew, right? Um, and then there's stability, if you will, from seven, eight, uh, through um, from six, seven, eight, and then there's a slight drop to nine. Kind of steady, and then you tend to see a little growth in eleventh and twelfth. So, that's the general pattern. I've seen it in other school systems and, and um, it seems to apply here as well.
So, so before we had all-day kindergarten, that jump from K to one used to be bigger, it was closer to nine, or nine and a half percent. But when we offered all-day kindergarten, our numbers grew in kindergarten, so that base was already bigger, so that jump came down a little bit. The, just the observation I would make is, um, in the wake of the great, last great recession, um, and it'd be interesting to see where we're headed here in the next six to twelve months. I mean, Microsoft just announced they're laying off five percent of their global workforce today. We did see some impact in enrollment. Um, it's a, it's a discretionary decision to send kids to private school, of course. And so, it, when recession, particularly in industries well-represented in Winchester hits home, families sometimes have to make some tough decisions. Um, that was always the case, but, but, but particularly once we built a beautiful new high school, as some members uh, here tonight will recall, we were stunned to see the sharp enrollment increase at Winchester High School. I mean, everybody kind of thought, nobody's going to uproot their family from the community and move when their kids are in high school, but in fact, we, we saw that. So, you know, the, what, what is on the horizon economically at a macro level and how that may impact us in some family decisions, you know, remains to be seen, but it's certainly something um, I'm thinking a lot about. It's another one of the great unknowns. I'm thinking a lot about. It's another one of the great unknowns.
Any other questions on this particular slide? Hearing none?
No, but I think unless, I think that these two are pretty clear, Dr. Hackett, of what's happening.
Yeah, I did essentially just a little bit more of a breakdown graphically.
And so this brings us to the elementary in, whoa, not so fast. Who's doing the slide, elementary enrollment? By cohort, you can see the the classes there, and then I guess we can move to the next one because we can talk about.
All right. Oh, thank you for the permission.
And and it all leads up to this slide.
Right, right. I would just say it's not insignificant that since FY22, which is only a couple of years ago, that we have, you know, and and with our proposal for FY24, that we that we've dropped 10 elementary sections. And and, you know, just to also point out the obvious to you, it's a lot harder to do in neighborhood schools because the distribution is is never equal. And as you get, as you get closer to approaching, you know, three, two sections that we're not, and we don't have that situation now, but of a grade level, it gets much more difficult to make reductions because you just have, you have less staff to spread students over. So, you know, if you have 50 kids, you know, are you gonna go two sections of 25 at first grade? Are you gonna go three sections of something less? And that, so the fact we've been able to accommodate for some reductions has been, you know, we, I think we've been fortunate to a certain extent to be able to do that, and I also think that the the class size averages overall are are still very favorable and wouldn't be recommending these reductions if if we thought, if we thought otherwise.
And that also is what then allowed us to cover some of our increases in special education as well. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Questions on this? Mr. Nixon?
Maybe a Sorry, that was a leftover hand up. I'll put it down.
Okay. We can move on then, Dr. Hackett. And move on? I think we can. Any questions about River or Cambridge and how that affects our enrollment? Mr. Hopcraft?
So when, when will we factor this in? I mean, I guess we don't really know when the, when those projects, or do we know when those projects will be done? And when people and whether people, what the patterns are for people moving in and and I guess, as Mr. Nixon teeing up for this one, but just want to make sure that we're budgeting for what we're expecting.
I'm gonna let Dr. Dr. I'm gonna let Dr. Hackett take it first, Mr. Nixon.
Okay. I mean, I, you know, I, I would, I would, I would defer to Mr. Nixon and and to those of you who have been here longer than I have in terms of the timing and the completion of the projects. I mean, I just generally, you know, these projections are done by when, when these projects make proposals to come into communities, you know, it's that that conversation starts there. You know, it's hard to know if if we, let's say, we look at River Street, if it's 30 kids in K through five, like I said before, are they all gonna come in a kindergarten? Are they all gonna come in, you know, at fifth grade? Are they gonna be equally distributed? And that, that becomes the challenge, going back to the comments I made just previously, is, is how students are distributed. And and I also just want to remind everybody is that we are going to be here at Parkers with the Lynch School for the next two years. So that has to factor into how we think about incoming students, not just for for these developments, but also for any incoming new students, because we truly only have so much room here at Parkers. And we, you know, we have to be very planful and careful about how we think about, you know, the incoming population. And we have an obligation, in my view, to make sure that the students who are currently at Lynch are our priority for staying together here at Parkers to the extent that they want to be here. You know, and as we've talked about before, there might be some options for, for some choices too. But, you know, that, I just want to point that out because I, you know, I know Lynch has been discussed as part of the the enrollment projections around these projects, and and I just think that, you know, we really need to think that through collectively on, on how we want to manage that, at least for the next two years.
And Mr. Hopcraft, I'll offer that I think Mr. Zaleski, before he left, got used to my monthly email saying, what is the update on Cambridge and River? And prior to his leaving, he offered that it was, that neither building would open prior to eight months from, that was probably about a month or two ago. So he, he did not anticipate either building being able to open to begin renting to people prior to August, and that he didn't expect us to see people in the buildings until probably December. So that was the last update I had from Mr. Zaleski before he walked out the door, but we could certainly check with the building department on this as well and see if they have any further updates in his, in Mr. Zaleski's absence. Mr. Nixon?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, you know, to the question of do we know what the timing is, River Street has a roof on it now. And the exterior wall is substantially complete, cladding's going up. That project looks like it's going to be substantially complete late this spring, early this summer. You know, there will always be punch lists, and one has to market spaces and so forth, and there's landscaping. That project is moving along at a really good clip. I would actually be surprised if there weren't people in that building by December. But there's no question that project is gonna open and have have residents move in during this coming school year. The Cambridge Street project is a little further behind. Interestingly, you know, from the street, Cambridge almost seems like a bigger project. I think that's just the consequence of being up on a hill. But it is actually a slightly smaller project. And it's not, you know, it's not quite as far along as, you know, there was a little mishap there a few months ago. That project certainly also looks to be substantially complete during the coming school year. But I, I would put no estimate on when exactly it'll be done. But River Street absolutely is going to be coming online, and I expect would have some sort of impact to us as a district. And I would just add to Dr. Hackett's remarks, we've never gone so far as to sort of estimate, you know, what the grade level distribution would be, because there's just no way to predict it. So we came up with some, some ranges in working with the UMass folks. It could be high, it could be low, and that's why if you, if you look at Dr. Hackett's numbers here, you know, they in the aggregate, we've actually estimated River Street could be anywhere from 85 to 95 students. But within that number, you know, we could have this range for elementary, could have that range for middle school, could have that range for high school. We could be off by three, four, or five students. We just don't know.
So so just as a follow-up note that that number you just said is is greater than the number on the slide by that time.
But that's my, that's my point, Tom, is that, is that the work that we did sort of in the aggregate for the master plan was simply to say, you know, district wide, it could be 80 to 95 students. But the more try to grant, the more granular you become, the more difficult it is to really be certain about what you're gonna get. So I think the these numbers sort of reflect a little more certainty. In other words, we would expect at least 30 to 35 elementary, at least 22 to 24 middle, at least 13 to 16 high school. But if we hit the aggregate numbers, there could be more. It could be those elementary numbers are higher. It could be the high school numbers are higher. In other words, there's, there's no way, I think there's a lack of of confidence in taking the numbers down to that level. And and it's why frankly, we throw on the brakes, because nobody's gonna say how many fourth graders we're gonna get, right? Or seventh graders we're gonna get.
Right. Now I get that the distribution is speculative. I was just, the total enrollment for K-12, there may be some, obviously, these are all estimates. But for Dr. Hackett and Mr. Rowe, I was wondering, do we need to be, you know, plugging something in for second half of '24, since we're talking about that budget now? And it sounds like we're expecting some portion of these students to be here. Does that, you know, change our number of classes, number of faculty that we need? Or should there be some plug in the budget?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, I think, you know, I, we have, I don't, I don't think we can continue to carry positions in anticipation of enrollment growth. I mean, I, I feel that, you know, we, the town trusted us last year, you know, we were very candid about saying out loud that we may be overstaffed, that we'll be back, and clearly, we've made reductions and and gonna make additional reductions. So, you know, in in a scenario where we might need to add a teacher, I, I think it's gonna be us coming back to you and saying, you know, we've got a problem and we need to figure this out. My hope is that and this is a discussion for another meeting, but policy subcommittee did begin the conversation about open enrollment. I requested that they recommend to you that you give me the same authority that you gave me last year to kind of take these, take it open enrollment requests on a, on an as, as requested basis, while case by case basis. You know, we might need to consider even moving a little bit more forward with Mr. Nixon had mentioned, you know, you have voted on districts that exist. We may need to talk about what is there, is there a level of flexibility over the next couple of years that we can apply to those districts with, you know, kind of at the discretion of administration when we know that if we, if we have new people coming in and we have the opportunity to shift them reasonably to a, to a different school where the numbers are lower in that grade level. You know, I, I think that's a, that's a worthwhile conversation, whether we go full-blown development of flexible boundaries or not. But, you know, I think we have to find some creative ways to manage the next couple of years because, you know, just starting with the fact that Lynch is gonna be at Parkers is 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 a complication because we can't add sections, we don't have more classrooms.
And to follow up on that, Dr. Hackett, I, I understand there's probably a challenge about building some of those, those enrollment numbers simply into our projected enrollment because of something that Mr. Nixon said. We, we plainly just don't know where they will go. And if we have 20 kids at third grade, we can't predict for that, and nobody else anywhere else. If those 20 kids are equally distributed between K-5, that may not affect us at all.
Correct.
Is that the simple, the simple way to look at it?
It is.
And that would be something that we, as, as a committee, as a district, if, if we suddenly got an influx at a certain grade in a mid-year, that would be an as, a just-in-time situation we would have to deal with.
Right.
Thought I saw another hand up. Ms. Ballen essay, was your hand up? And are you all set?
Oh, I was just, I was going to piggyback off of Mr. Nixon's comment, but I can't apply any technical discussion to my impression of how the Cambridge Street built, uh, building project is going, but it just looks big and massive. It's got windows already filled in, it's covered in blue. So I don't know how far along that is, but it has just really come along rather quickly from laypersons. You are often going by perspective.
And I, I don't, I don't care for the exterior blue color they pick either. I, I just think
I think they'll be covered up at some point.
I think, Dr. Hackett, we can come back to the committee next time, checking in with the building department and the town manager and see if they have any better estimates than, you know, than we have as there's a roof on the building and windows in where, where we're gonna land with those projects. I imagine that that's something they have, they are keeping track of over there. Because my update was, is a few months old now. Mr. Hopcraft?
I was just gonna note that, you know, it's not 20 or 30 students, it's, you know, 115 to 125, 135, something, you know, in that range, when all is said and done. So, you know, I, I understand that they're not budgeting for it now, and we'll come back later. I think that's fine, but, um, but it it could be a significant number in the end.
It could. My point, Mr. Hopcraft, was all the 20 students that we expect at elementary may, could come in all at third grade, or they could be distributed K-5. And if we, depending on how the middle and high school students, they could come all in at middle school, they could come all in at high school. And so that's what makes it hard, I think, to roll those into our regular projections until those buildings open and we actually get a sense of how the, the kids are coming. We can, we can say how many we expect to come, but not where. And our response to that may be different, and middle and high school can absorb students a little better than elementary, the elementary school can as well.
And 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 to that point, though, until they can't, right? So at the middle school, we, we, we have teams. And, you know, if if we were to reach a certain influx of population, we, you know, might not just be hiring one more English teacher. It might be hiring, you know, another partial half team. So, you know, that, that, you know, those are the kind of things that factor in at that level. I would also just remind us all that, you know, you, you, you petition the MSBA for additional enrollment at, at Lynch for this reason. So, and not only that, but, you know, we were able to talk them into some additional classrooms at K-1 and 2, moving from the four that were, that were originally part of the, of the plan to, to five. So we're gonna be in a good place in terms of space to handle enrollment increases a couple of years from now. It's just gonna be tough for the next couple of years to, to, if if that really does come to fruition, we start seeing large numbers.
Yep. Mr. Nixon?
I just, not to put too fine a point on it, while Ms. Bergstrom's correct, we, we can never know exactly what the distribution will be. We can make some conservative but educated guesses about it. You know, a Chuck E. Cheese is not going to attract 16 and 17-year-olds, it's gonna attract younger kids. There's nothing about River Street or Cambridge that's going to attract, you know, families with certain age kids. It's, it's a bolus of housing units. And when we look at some of the other, either recent or more dense housing developments, and we did this again back in like the fall of 20, we find a pretty interesting distribution of ages throughout those developments. So we have elementary, we have middle school, and we have high school. My expectation is we will have a mix. Don't know how closely it's gonna follow like a townwide average, but there would be some mix of students that we would expect to see distributed throughout. And the other point I just, I thought I would make in in this conversation, we haven't used this expression as in a while, but when, when Dr. Hackett's predecessor was with us, we, we did talk at length on occasion about the rise and what we call the non-traditional family in Winchester. We have more and more households with multiple families in them. And that means more kids. So we've got cousins living in houses, we have multi-generational families, and that also has a consequence on enrollment. And the last time we looked, we did not see an abatement in that trend as well. That's it.
So could I just ask a question about your expectations for the next step of the budget process? Like, we've heard, you know, some pretty specific requests, so I'm, I'm clear on those. But are there other thoughts or are there, is there other information that you would like to see? You know, we will be able to present you with the line item detail at the next meeting. It would be helpful if we're gonna make some adjustments, that we could make those two, and then provide those adjustments as part of the line item detail with additional supporting materials that go as part with, you know, just the overall budget binder that we put together on a, on a yearly basis. And I also, we have, I'll settle on that question. Charlie, good to see you, man.
Good to see you too. Sorry, I was a little late. I had practice.
No, that's what I heard.
Made it in time.
Gotta have priorities.
Are there any thoughts from the committee on anything that you would like to see at our next meeting, other than the things that have already been asked for or that Dr. Hackett has now outlined? Dr. Hackett is, I, I see a lot of thinking. Could I ask committee members that if they're not prepared to do that, to have that now, that they get that to you before the beginning of next week?
Absolutely.
That works for committee members. Okay. Then I think we can move on from our, and from our discussion of the FY24 budget development and move back to superintendent chair and student remarks. Dr. Hackett, that sounds like it starts with you.
It does, in the order that you read it. But what I wouldn't give to have someone else go first, after, you know, talking to the point where I can't stand myself anymore.
I would just add that the, this committee had requested, it seemed, we seemed to have general consensus around supporting the letter from MASC. I am planning to attend office hours with Senator Lewis and discuss some of those items with him and see if he has any suggestions on how we best approach advocacy for and see if he has any suggestions on how we best approach advocacy for, um, increasing the circuit breaker to a 100% reimbursement, given the increasing cost of special education and the increasing tuition. At our next regular meeting, I'll be prepared to bring that letter back, um, to this committee for their signatures and support. Thingcom had also, the education subcommittee, um, indicated some interest in that. So, um, if we are able, Mr. Hopcraft and I will be able to share that at the next finance subcommittee meeting with those members as well. Other than that, I just want to say, um, congratulations to all the Winchester High School students as of tomorrow for making it through midterm week. It's amazing that it is the end of the first semester of this school year already. And congratulations to the teachers who will then be grading and evaluating all those midterm essays, projects and tests and, um, getting all that good work and feedback back to our students, um, in the next couple of weeks as well. And with that, I will turn it over to Ella and Charlie. We are happy to see you back with us again. Did you have anything that you'd like to share or, um, ideas from the students?
Great to see you, uh, starting off. Um, I didn't, we didn't really necessarily prepare any remarks from the students. If Ella has anything to say, that would be great.
I would just have to add that, um, for midterm week, we, uh, we haven't exactly had like a traditional schedule really since freshman year. But one of the things that all of the students have really agreed on is the use of WIM blocks. They've kind of just been in the middle of the day, which has been super helpful for a lot of kids to just like meet with teachers or study or do you finishing touches on any projects through essays. But yeah, that's kind of all I really had on my mind, especially also for seniors, because we are allowed to leave during WIM block. So it's been really nice.
What a life.
I've been having like an hour and a half lunch for the past.
Having that lunch in 17 years.
Enjoy it while it lasts.
Absolutely. Oh, man.
Well, we appreciate you being with us again, and certainly as always, if you have any, also have any comments, um, on any of the things that we're discussing or, um, any questions for Dr. Hackett about the budget or the priorities as we talked about. You should also feel free to, um, email him with any questions or myself between now and the next meeting as well. I'm happy to see you. Um, and we will then move on to our consent agenda. We had two items on the consent agenda. One was a generous gift of $2,000 to Winchester High School from the Cummings Grant Foundation. And the other was consideration of minutes from August 22nd, September 27th and October 4th. Big shout out to, um, Ms. Allen, who has rejoined us after, um, uh, her leave of absence and joining her new baby and, um, getting us back on track with getting minutes back on our agenda too. So, and Mr. Brady for assisting with that. Um, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda unless anybody has anything that, um, we need to pull out from that. So moved.
I'll second.
I need a roll call vote since we're on Zoom. Mr. Hopcraft?
Aye.
Ms. Bollanessa?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous and, um, anticipated agenda items for next meeting. I think it, and our next anticipated, uh, meeting dates, I'm going to take along with that as well because our next agenda item will again just be the FY24 budget. So, um, I, I noticed that January 24th is very close to this meeting. It would be next Tuesday. Um, the finance subcommittee is also intending to meet next week as well. And what I would like to propose to the committee, if, um, you so approve, would be to actually move that January 24th meeting to January 30th, Monday, January 30th, to, um, give Dr. Hackett, Mr. Rowe some time with the budget. And in the interim, have the finance subcommittee already, um, was planning to meet next week and we could meet next Thursday morning at our, the time we have held at 9:30 in the morning. And, um, that would be another opportunity for any committee members that wanted to attend, to get any additional questions answered, look at the budget a little more finely, and then come back to the meeting on the 30th with the revised budget. Dr. Hackett, would you like to comment on that, how that works for you?
I think that would be splendid.
Excellent. Um, oh, sorry, go ahead.
And just to add, I mean, you know, and I want to, I want to thank, um, Peter and Andrew and the business office. I don't think that, um, you know, the general public understands, um, you know, we're, we're, it, it's quite, as exciting as it was to settle three contract units, uh, the week before December, uh, Christmas break, the winter break. We all of a sudden, uh, were struck with the realization that while we are trying to develop the FY24 budget, the people who we set all those contracts with are, are, are looking for their FY23 settlement, uh, earnings and, uh, trying to scramble, um, to both figure that out, provide that, get that done through payroll, as well as also rolling forward FY24 has been a really heavy lift. And, you know, uh, Peter is, uh, is, you know, at, at 50% is, is a hundred percent better than anybody I've ever worked with, thankfully. But, um, you know, it's, it's been a challenge, so I just want to really thank them. The, the additional time would be, would be, uh, appreciated. Um, and I think it would give us some, some good time to vet some additional things out. Gives you time to ask questions, gives you time to, some of you, um, have, um, met directly with, uh, Mr. Rowe, and to ask questions, to learn more, uh, some, you know, that, that certainly is options always available. Gives time for your finance subcommittee to have a more thorough meeting, uh, and you more time with, with a more complete, uh, budget draft. So it would be, it would be very difficult to turn around much, um, by Tuesday. I mean, it would be, we could do it, but, um, the extra time would be appreciated. And I also just want to say, I guess, that while you're going to be voting a budget on 31st of January, uh, I don't really see this time, um, this budget cycle, that your conversations around the budget are going to end, uh, on January 31st. I mean, I, I think there's a lot more to discuss. You obviously have, um, we've talked about tonight, you know, where we headed with Lynch Transportation, where we had with special education costs, what's, is it going to be 14%? It's going to be something less, where we head with kindergarten enrollment. So, uh, there's a lot of other variables that are going to play out over the next couple of months that, um, you should and would want to discuss that may have an implication on, on how you're thinking about the budget itself.
And with a new governor, Dr. Hackett, it, that adds another complication for us this year too, because her budget is not due until March.
Correct.
Which is a bit later than normal as well. So we may not have even some of those finalizations on things like circuit breaker or state numbers until a bit later than we're used to having them also.
It also gives us time to prepare for that on flux of cash that's going to be dumping on us from the state, from all the reserves that they have and the new taxes that are going to go into play. I mean, it gives us time to, you know, set up to really be ready to receive that money. So.
You've clearly been in the meeting too long, Dr. Hackett.
You know how it is. Pretty proud of myself to go this long.
Mr. Nixon?
Yeah, so I, I'm going to ask you to repeat some of your remarks, Ms. Bergstrom. So I was with you until I lost you. I thought, I, I, I don't feel like there's any point in meeting on Tuesday, just the quick turnaround. So I thought you were going to suggest the 26th, but you were suggesting, can you just repeat one more time what you were putting out there?
Yes, I'm suggesting a finance subcommittee meeting on Thursday, the 26th at 9:30 AM. We, um, had originally, um, had a placeholder for one on that date. It's not posted yet, but that is the placeholder for the finance subcommittee meeting. And then on Monday, January 30th in the evening, we would have a school committee meeting.
And, but we're still scheduled to vote on the 31st?
Correct.
So then I just, I, I, I'm going to ask, I, I apologize, I'm going to ask a dumb question. I was going back to my emails. But if the slide that's with our agenda tonight says, I believe it says, public hearing on the budget, February 7th. Am I?
Nope. Unless.
After the January 31st, that budget public hearing is for January 31st. Is how I read it.
I mean, we, we, we typically hold the budget hearing before we vote the budget. And in some years, I think we hold it the night we vote the budget, because it gives the public the opportunity to say, I believe it's the first, first or second slide, Dr. Hackett. It's February 7th.
The night we vote the budget is usually the budget hearing.
The punctuation might be throwing, um, that is not probably appropriate. So that is referring to January 31st, colon, budget public hearing.
Okay.
February 7th is the next meeting after that.
Okay, good. So I just wanted to be sure if we're changing updates, we're not impacting the schedule of the hearing since we have advertising requirements for that. So.
We are not.
February 7th would just be a regular.
Meeting following the budget hearing. Because otherwise, if we were the second, uh, I believe, and I believe that is a little bit off schedule for us as well, Mr. Nixon, because if we were, uh, the second Tuesday in.
There's a reason. That's Valentine's Day.
There, it is, and it would only allow us one meeting in the month of February if we would need it. If we're on the 7th, we, um, we do have the option to meet then again the week after February vacation if we need to.
Yeah. Um, okay. So thank you for just clarifying, uh, the contribution, Dr. Hackett. So, uh, Ms. Bergstrom, you had asked about, I think, future agenda items, right? So we, we, we typically take up schedule of courses for the middle school and high school. Uh, and we, we do that in January or February. I mean, we used to do it in February or March. In the past couple of years, we've tried to pivot only because we didn't want to get into a situation where we found we were budget constrained, that we, there was something that, you know, principals wanted to offer, but we couldn't do it because we couldn't afford it. And we gave ourselves a dope slap because we had actually just voted the budget. So I, I would ask, um, Dr. Hackett, Dr. Ellen Emma to sort of put their heads together on this. If there's, I mean, we've already talked about the Mandarin piece, so my presumption moving forward is, you know, we should, we should plan for that if that's going to be in the budget. But we should, we should make room and time to have, um, Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Lynn come in and talk about their plans for courses for, uh, those schools soon.
We are in fact, already have that on the schedule, Mr. Nixon. It's on the curriculum subcommittee schedule. Um, and I believe that date is the 30th also.
Yeah.
Mind me, Ms. Bollanessa, you, you, you.
The 30th.
The 30th.
So not, not being on the curriculum subcommittee, would I know that?
Um, I am letting you know right now in response here.
My point is that's still.
The programs of study will be on the curriculum subcommittee on the 30th and they, the recommendations will come to the school committee following that meeting. As we did last year.
In February. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
February 7th, hopefully.
Okay.
If they are, if we, everything is on schedule.
So I just bring it up because I see that as a future agenda item.
Yep.
Okay.
Gave us an opportunity to let everyone know.
Okay.
Mr. Hopcraft?
Thank you. I was just on Mr. Nixon's first point, um, just to clarify, from the 24th and the 31st, we are not meeting either of those dates, right?
The 31st, we are meeting. That is our, we're meeting the 30th and the 31st, the 30th.
And the 31st.
Is our budget hearing, but we are not meeting on the 24th.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Sure. Anything else under anticipated agenda items? Okay, um, then we will adjourn to executive session. It is for purpose two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union administrative personnel, because in open meeting, they have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. We will, um, only reconvene in public session, um, for any purposes of voting on or taking action on that item. And I will take a roll call motion to adjourn to executive session. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Bollanessa?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcraft?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous. Thank you to everyone who helped bring us to today with the budget documentation and for all the work that will happen going forward, we really appreciate it. It was really nice to see everyone, even virtually.
Just so you know, um, you do have invitations for the executive session. They should be on the top of your inbox right now. Andrew will, um, Andrew will open that and, uh, will give, um, Ms. Bergstrom full control. So there you go. Um, and I will keep this session open, um, and you can let me know whether you intend to return to the session. Sooner the better, because, um, you know, that'd be great to know.
Because otherwise, everybody gets to watch you sing and dance in the.
No, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to go dark. So if those of you in the audience who are thinking it's going to be entertainment, I, I'm really sorry to disappoint you. I just, I'm not up for it.
So, Dr. Hackett, for Windcam's benefit, can you maybe just like throw up a Google Doc that just says we're in executive session?
I'll put together a nice looking slide.
Cause that broadcast is just going to run with a black screen otherwise.
Okay, all right. Mine is sitting here and smile. All right.
Thank you.
See you. Thank you. Bye. See you. Thank you. Bye.
Programs of study will be on the Curriculum Subcommittee on the 30th, and they, the recommendations will come to the school committee following that meeting. As we did last year.
In February, okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
February 7th, hopefully.
Okay.
If they are, if everything is on schedule.
So I just bring it up because I see that as a future agenda item.
Yep.
Okay.
Gave us an opportunity to let everyone know.
Okay.
Your Hopcraft.
Uh, thank you. I was just on Mr. Nixon's first point. Just to clarify, on the 24th and the 31st, we are not meeting either of those dates, right?
The 31st, we are meeting. That is our, we're meeting the 30th and the 31st, the 30th.
And the 30th.
Yeah, is our budget hearing, but we are not meeting on the 24th.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Sure. Anything else under anticipated agenda items? Okay, then we will adjourn to executive session. It is for purpose two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union administrative personnel because in open meeting, they have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. We will only reconvene in public session for any purposes of voting on or taking action on that item. And I will take a roll call motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Bollanessa?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcraft?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous. Thank you to everyone who helped bring us to today with the budget documentation. And for all the work that will happen going forward, we really appreciate it. It was really nice to see everyone, even virtually.
I, just so you know, you do have invitations for the executive session. They should be on the top of your inbox right now. Andrew will, Andrew will open that. And we'll give Ms. Burstrom full control. So there you go. And I will keep this session open, and you can let me know whether you intend to return to the session. Sooner the better because, you know, that'd be great to know.
Because otherwise, everybody gets to watch you sing and dance in the.
No, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna go dark. So if those of you in the audience who are thinking it's gonna be entertainment, I, I'm really sorry to disappoint you. I just, I'm not up for it.
So Dr. Hackett, for Windcam's benefit, can you maybe just like throw up a Google Doc that just says we're in executive session?
I'll put together a nice looking slide.
Because that broadcast. It's gonna run with a black screen, otherwise.
Okay, all right. Mine is sitting here and smile. All right.
Thank you.
See you. Thank you. Bye.
We are back, Dr. Hackett, if you are in the room somewhere.
I am.
We are reconvening in public session at eight twenty six P. M. for the purposes of voting and taking action on the outcome of our executive session. Mr. Nixon, did you have a motion that you would like to make?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I'm pleased to move that the school committee amend Dr. Hackett's employment contract for F Y twenty three with an increase in his salary of two and a quarter percent.
I second that.
I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Hopcraft?
Aye.
Ms. Bollensee?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous. Congratulations, Dr. Hackett, and thank you for all your hard work for the district. Coming in as interim and keeping on with us as a full-time superintendent has definitely been beneficial to the district, and we appreciate everything that you have been working on.
Well, I would say the same to you and for your support, and you know that I appreciate all that, and I do, as hard as this work is. I do like it, and I will tell you that your support and working with you makes that a ninety percent true statement. If I didn't have your support and the times that we're going through right now, and I know there's super tests out there who are in that position, it would be too much. So thank you for supporting me, and thank you for your cooperation, and thank you for, I've learned a lot from you so far, and looking forward to going through the rest of this year and getting an F Y twenty four. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Excellent. Have a good evening.
You too.
I appreciate everything you do. Thanks.
Can you have a mo- can I make a motion to adjourn? That was it, right? At eight twenty eight?
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.